This time I'd like to call the January 9, 2008 Planning Commission meeting to order. Before we get started, I have a couple of announcements. Item 12A, Carl Stafford Estates Lot KC 1 through KC 4 has been pulled from the agenda. So if there is anyone here to discuss that property this evening, we will not be taking it up at this meeting. Another announcement is, I want to announce the resignation of Mr. Scott Courtwright. And this time, I'd like to thank him publicly for his service to the commission and the parish. Moving along, let the record show that all commissioners are present. Now moving to the election of the chairman and vice-chairman for 2008. This time, we'll go ahead and open the floor up for nominations.
Nomination for chairman first?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Alan Kraus for chairman.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? I entertain a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close nominations.
I'll second.
Motion to close, and second to close nominations. Since there is no other nominations, is there any opposition to Mr. Kraus as chair? And Mr. Kraus, congratulations or condolences, whichever.
I think the latter is probably correct.
We'll trade seats. You get the gavel. Name of day.
This is the chair of the gavel goes. The influence.
Want your name, please?
Yeah.
Mind being for a little while?
Okay.
Thank you very much for the honor. It's a privilege being here. I'd like to say, I think the time that I've been on this commission, we've come a long way and addressed a lot of needed concerns in the parish. And I think in the future, we're going to probably do even better. I think this is a strong commission, and I'm happy to be a part of it and looking forward to the future of it. At this time, I think I'd like to open up the floor for nominations of the vice-chair.
I'd like to make a nomination for Mike Marshawn for vice-chair. I'll second.
Do I have a nomination by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Paige Becknell? Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none. Do I have any motion to close nominations? Have a second? Okay. Then first and second to close the nominations. Due to no other opposition, Michael Marshawn is hereby elected vice-chair. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to the acceptance of the minutes of the December 12 meeting. There is a revised set of minutes. I believe I saw those. Did everybody receive a copy of them?
Yes.
So I have a motion to accept the revised minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Don Grant, seconded by Beverly Barre. Is it Barre? Motion carries. Moving right along into the business at hand. Have the public comment period. Anybody who wants to come up and make a comment of any item that is not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, your address, and we'll listen for any comments. Anybody? Okay? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Dean. I live at 18265 Mancheck Place Drive in Prairieville. I'm curious about Baton Rouge Loop and what, if any, activity is taking place within Planning and Zoning Commission.
I can just tell you, the little that I know, I know they have a public meeting, and maybe there's somebody within parish staff that knows this. They're still going through the public hearing process, eliminating the route selection. And I saw somewhere that the next meeting will be held soon, but I'm not sure where.
Yeah, in another part of February.
As far as this body, no. They have not come to us with any recommendations or information. It's pretty much a parish-wide involvement, and I think once they narrow it down to the individual route or the selected route, then we'll be, get the input on it. As of right now, it's still going through the public information, public hearing process.
Okay. Is there a way that I could find out who the councilman is for northern Ascension in Prairieville area?
Way, yeah.
I'm not familiar with that at the moment.
I mean, the parish president, I know, is on the committee. It's, you know, you have a five parish board that's looking at this thing.
On the executive committee.
So obviously, all the parish presidents, and I think that Baton Rouge is leading the charge, but there's a website. You can go to the website, and all the meetings are public information. You follow up on it. Very well informed as far as getting the public involved, so.
Okay.
The parish office, I think if you call them, they'll probably be able to help you with any information in that regard, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any comments, knowledge? Well, it'll go through the parish. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Sheila Arrington. I'm at 17222 Highway 929 Prairieville. And I had understood that Parisian Villas and LaFay Center zoning was going to be at this meeting tonight.
Yeah, it is. We do the planning meeting, and then we'll have a joint meeting for a PUD, and then we'll have the zoning meeting, so that's.
So this will be last?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right. Have a public hearing to consider the following family partition. I got my order messed up here. Family partition Peggy Dagel property, lots A4B1, A1, and A4B1, A2, Earl's and Associates.
Good evening. I'm Jimmy Schuss with Earl's and Associates, representing Dagel family.
Let us explain the process. What have you got?
This, Ms. Dagel and Ms. Cheryl had owned this property. It was one track, and we're trying to subdivide it into two tracks.
Any commissioners have any comments or questions?
What will you be doing with the, what is the reason for subdivision?
For Mr. Jared Smiley is the son, I think, of Ms. Cheryl Dagel, and they're going to transfer the property to him.
Is he going to build a home, or?
I think he's going to build a home. Yes, ma'am.
What's going to happen to that shed that's on that property?
I'm not sure what's going to happen to the shed on the property. I mean, looking at the shed, it's a nice shed. I would probably leave it there.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If not, I'll, go ahead.
Staff, the trailer in lot, in the proposed lot, A4B1, A2, will that trailer meet the minimum required setbacks?
Shouldn't that building, that bottom line between the two large, to give 25.
Therefore, making lot, the first lot, A-1, a smaller, smaller than an acre? I think they wanted that acre, but.
The trouble is, it was on the side of how, we didn't notice what you had, 25.
Mm-hmm.
So that happened to the top lot.
Okay. Okay, we can go ahead and make that change.
And just as a point of clarification, you have an existing servitude, servitude of passage and a proposed servitude of passage. You're going to combine those to a total of 40 foot, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it's in addition to, okay.
Yes, sir. That would become a 40-foot servitude, probably servitude of passage.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the floor for public comment and hearing. Anybody wishing to come up and ask questions, please come forward. Please check in, write your name. Nobody wants to comment? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Any other comments or questions by the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, provided the north property line of lot A4B1, A1, B moves south to ensure that the existing trailer meets the necessary setback.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Julio, seconded by Sherri Slimon. All in favor? All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, have a public hearing to grant him final approval to Keystone of Galvez, first filing parts three and four.
Good evening. My name is Derek Murphy with Ferris Engineering. I'm representing Keystone of Galvez tonight for the final plat approval, first filing parts three, four, and five. Our asphalt is down. We're asking, and pretty much, we have just minor things left to do. We're asking for approval contingent upon the final inspection and addressing any punch list items that'll be on that final inspection. Thank you.
Have you requested the final inspection?
We'll be requesting a final inspection within the next few days. Weather is, weather constraints.
Oh, Neil, what was our, when did we pass the thing about the final inspection being completed before they come here? Was there a?
We didn't.
The bonding.
The what?
The bonding. It was a bonding.
Bonding. Yeah, okay.
Is there a problem why you can't wait till you complete before you come before?
Well, we're going to, we're going to be doing a final inspection, like I said, within the next week or so, and we'll probably have all the punch list items and everything done well before the next meeting. And so we just want to go ahead and have it signed before the next Planning Commission meeting.
Have you addressed the, you've got the zero lot line lots indicated on the plat?
Yes.
And the different types of lots, general note, you've addressed that issue as well?
Yes.
And the name, I don't see Woodstone Drive, so I presume you resolved that issue?
That's correct. All the items have been addressed.
Staff, you.
Three or four days, we'll be having a final inspection, one day next week.
Any other question from the commissioners? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anybody have any comments? Please come forward. No one wishes to comment? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any other questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Well, knowing what I know about this development, I think the developer has given us what he's promised us. We have made him jump through more hoops than we have other developers, and I don't think that their request is unreasonable. So I'm going to make a motion to approve contingent upon final inspection and completion of punch list items.
I'll second.
Have a motion to approve by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Paige. Any opposition? Motion carries. We have a public hearing to consider the following simple divisions of property with the variance. Constant Joseph, help me with this pronunciation.
First to J.
Thank you. Property tracks 5A and 5B.
Hello again. We're asking for approval for Mr. Robert Taylor for this simple division of track 5A and 5B for the sale exchange between property owners.
Oh, let's see. The variance is.
Frontage on the front.
Frontage, okay. Frontage on the public street. Commissioners have any questions or comments?
Is the whole tract in mixed-use corridor? This is really a question to staff. Charles, is the whole tract in mixed-use corridor? Or is it one of these situations where today it's predom, because the majority of it is in mixed-use corridor, it is therefore a mixed-use corridor? And when we create the subdivision, will the smaller lot remain in mixed-use corridor? So it's all in mixed-use corridor? Okay. I was trying to figure out where the line ran through it when I looked at it. Okay.
This time, I'd like to open it up to public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and comment, please come forward, sign your name. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any more questions or comments?
My only comment is if it's approved, there is a possibility of further division. We might want to consider putting in a stipulation that no further division be allowed. So I'll make that motion. I motion to approve with the variance on the condition that no further division be allowed.
I'll second that. You want the note on the plat though, correct?
For, I'm sorry, excuse me, for the purpose of what?
That no further subdivision be allowed.
Okay.
Because it looks like with the road going up the side, it looks like somebody could come in and cut out more lots.
Okay. We have one note on there about the road, you know, the reason why they're letting the road step 20 feet, because it will not be used to service any additional lots. There is a note on there already. Will that suffice, or?
I don't think so. I think I'd rather it say no further subdivision be allowed.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Julio Dumas. Motion with variance, that no further subdivision be allowed. Do I have any opposition? Public hearing to consider the simple division property of Worth Evans Estate, lots CG 2A and CG 2B.
I'm Ronald Bennett with R.L. Bennett Engineers, representing James Cecil. He's requesting to be allowed to subdivide, being he has a large tract, tract of land. He's building a small home, and he can't get a loan from the bank due to the small house he's building versus the tract of land he has. He's requesting to be able to resub this one time for mortgage purposes only.
So he is going to build on this?
Yeah, he has an existing slab. He's building his house out there now.
Where is, on your plat that was submitted, where is Leboard Street? This did, this plat did not match up to what's out there now that, when I wrote out there? It was kind of confusing. So what you're saying is not actually a slab, he's actually built the house? And that's, that's the house that I thought we were referring to on here?
Yeah, I've got it, I got the, where a slab was located on.
Okay, so, so it's actually a white shell of a house? It's not finished, it's just the shell's up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But if you go back to the, if you're going back down Worth Evans Road, there's another street. Where is that street on this plat?
That would be on a lot of, on the side of lot B, coming in over here. They resubbed all that.
Okay, you positive? And I guess, I guess maybe it doesn't matter, because I know you're just cutting out this little plat, but the vicinity map doesn't show Leboard Street, and then what, what I saw actually out there does not match this lot B. So it was very confusing. And I don't know if you did the whole thing, or if this was, like I said, I understand you're just cutting out the, the single lot.
Right.
And a question real quick for staff. You said that the drainage is going to flow back to the, the little ditch canal back there?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Lord.
I guess the only issue I have is you've got a 15-foot servitude, front and servitude in the rear of that lot that goes from property line to property line, just effectively from nowhere to nowhere. And, you know, I think you need to, you need to connect it to something.
And that's, that's what I was just mentioning, because it doesn't make sense the way it is, but the property does kind of drain all the way back.
Right. It slopes back, but it, you know, I think you.
And we look, there's not a, there's not a ditch in the front where it can't float, it can't be, you know, connected to something in the front of the property, because the ditch does not run alongside the road out there. So there's, I don't know if staff has any suggestions, but there's not really a good solution for it.
That rear 15-foot servitude is required, right, staff?
Rear or side?
Rear or side.
Right, right. You know, you, I think you just need to connect it to, to that ditch in the back. You own all our property, you just need to connect it.
Somewhere.
You just connect it with a, you know, continue that 15-foot servitude back there and call it a drainage servitude.
Okay.
Are you thinking down, down the property line, or you don't want to bisect the property?
You know, I'm going to leave it up to him.
Okay.
You just got to get from the rear of that lot to the.
To the ditch.
To the ditch.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I hate to see you dissect the land like that. I mean, that's, to me, poor planning.
Yeah, I have to get with James and see how he wants to.
Right.
Might see if we can't go along the 12-foot utility over to, to the east side, the west side.
To the west side and then down to the ditch?
Yeah, come down to the ditch.
That would make better sense.
Is, is there a utility servitude along that gas line? It seemed like there would be. You may want to show that on your map, too. Show the gas, but you don't really show any servitude dimension there.
Okay.
This time, I'd like to open it up, public hearing. Anybody wishing to come up and comment, please come up and do so. Nobody wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments by the commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve for the contingencies that all of the servitudes are correctly drawn on the map as requested by Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll second.
Have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell, seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Public hearing on the Santa Ma Baptist Church property, tracks B1A, B1B, B1C. Mr. Quinmal.
Clint Quinmal, representing W.J. Quinmal Surveyors. Asking for Planning Commission approval on the subdivision of the variance of track B1, being the property Santa Ma Baptist Church, and to tracks B1A, B1B, and B1C. Has wanted a comment from the Planning Commission or consulting agency, wants to add the dedication for the private servitude of passage. We've done that. Also, I think it seemed to be a little confusion on the 40-foot servitude, servitude of passage, being a separate track. It is not. It is ownership to track B2. Off to the side of track B2, which would be to your right, if you're looking at the plat, is a area for Mr. Kenneth E. Sibley, the owner of track B2, to sign for approval of use of that servitude over his property.
What is the reason for this re-subdivision? Do you intend to sell this all?
I have my client present in case there's any non-technical questions that need to be answered.
Melva Meister here, 10414 AC Road. The purpose of the property is to build a house there for our youth pastor.
And if he is no longer your youth pastor, does it go back to the church? Is that his property?
No, ma'am. The property, it will become his property. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's no, all right.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're going to sell it to him? Is this what you're saying?
He's been with us for 13 years on a minimum salary, and we'd like, by the time he's 15 years, to have a property and a house that he can at least look forward to 30 years from now, some retirement benefit. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. And what about the second lot?
We'd like that available. That's why we brought it up at the same time.
Okay.
So that we could, if there were a need for that in the future, to build a house there, that would already be pre-approved, so we wouldn't have to go through the process again. That was our purpose of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one real quick. Lot B1C, will it have access directly onto AC Road, or will it go on to the, the church road?
No, it has, it has the 120.68 required frontage for a separate partition.
Right, no.
No, what I, what I meant was driveway access.
The, the one that's next to AC Road?
Right. Will he, will his driveway be on the, the church road or will it be on AC Road? Do you know?
Let me ask, what was your preference on that? On the side road, not on AC road.
Okay.
I didn't know that, so thank you for asking.
Any other questions at this time? If not, I open the floor. Public hearing. Anybody wishing to come up and comment, please come up and do so. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any more comments?
I just noticed, I don't see a, is it right here in front of me? A drainage servitude on the front lot, B1C?
No, uh, drains toward the road.
It all drains the road. It's all high property. It's never flooded.
That particular situation where last month.
Okay.
You know, not having one, but if you would like one, we could put one.
Any other questions?
Chris, let me just, is that, are you okay with that?
I think that's.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Ready for motion? I'm ready for motion. Make a motion to approve with the variance. Motion by Steve Courtright.
Second.
Barrow. Second by Don Grant. I just had to do it one last time in, in honor of Scott. Motion by Steve Barrow, seconded by Don Grant. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Public hearing to consider following servitude revocation. Lloyd M. Delon Property, Lots B3.
Good evening. Paul Kopanex, 17060 Parker Heights. I'm requesting revocation of drainage along with servitude that ran through, through the property on an angle, intending on relocating it, which has been done along the property line on, on the north side and invoking a 25-foot servitude along with the relocated drainage.
Commissioners have any questions?
O'Neill, this is actually a motion to recommend. It's got to go to the parish council for the actual revocation, correct?
The, where you moved the ditch, the drainage for Lot B3 and B4 will both go to the, to the moved ditch, correct? On, on the platte that I have, it doesn't look like they connect. The, the little dash line was not connected to the new.
Along the road?
Along the, I don't see a north arrow. Oh, along the east side.
They, they do not.
They don't connect?
No.
Okay, so it's supposed to be that way.
It, that's actual drainage from across the street that's going along my property line. It goes underneath Parker Heights along the side of my property and off to the north.
Okay. But the way the platte was before, all the drainage from Lot B1 to B4 looked like it went into that ditch.
That's correct.
But now it looks like it's being cut off.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing how it's cut off.
Lots, Lots B3 and B4.
Yes.
Your 15-foot servitude on the east side, which direction does that go? Does that go to the north or to the?
That all goes to the north.
Okay. See, on my platte, it does not show that it's connecting.
Okay.
Is it supposed to be? Is that just maybe it?
Well, there is, there is one ditch that does head off to the east, which is not shown on, on my, my platte here.
Can you, um, can you put your platte on the little, do you have a copy? Can you put it on the screen so we can pull it up? Okay, go to the neck. Do you have the second one? The one that shows the new? Okay. Yeah, the bottom pink line on the right side. See where it does not connect to the dash line?
Correct.
Okay, so should it connect or should it not connect?
It, it doesn't.
Okay, you don't, okay, so then, so then there is drainage that is, where it does not connect, that's going somewhere else?
On Lot B3 and B4, it drains along the 15-foot servitude and there is a ditch line on the backside.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what the street name is back there. I think it's Mary Ann.
Okay.
And it's just not shown on this.
Okay, so that drains a separate, to a separate area? Okay, that, thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That, that helped. That explains it.
Any other question? By commissioners?
Would you have any problem tying in that 15-foot drainage servitude to the newly proposed drainage servitude? Doesn't look like there's that much there. I don't think it's going to.
There would be, would be no problem doing it. Just as a note, CJ and some other folks from Public Works has been out to the property and this was done with their assistance and direction. So they did review all of the drainage in the area and I pretty much did most of it by their direction. So it has been reviewed.
That's fine.
If they asked me to do it, it would be no problem doing it.
All right.
The, the new servitude is already recorded though, right?
No, it isn't. The, the.
Oh, it's not?
25-foot.
The new, the new servitude is not recorded yet?
No, not yet.
This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and comment, please come forward and do so. Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any more questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the recommendation, provided that the dedication of the new servitude is connected to the east servitude, to the, to the drainage servitude on the east property line of Lots B3 and B4. All right, that's just a, a little rabbit that I think you need to close.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Don Grant, for approval with the condition to connect drainage servitudes. Any opposition? Motion carries. This time, we'd like to move into committee reports. Have a subdivision ordinance committee. Did y'all meet?
Yes, we did. We met and we have two items, one of which subdivisions, our ordinance says subdivisions should have more than one exit street. And we have talked up here numerous times about should versus shall and regulating that. But with the different property sizes that, that are developed into subdivisions, different sizes and shapes, we can't really regulate whether they have one or two entrances and exits or how many they have just because they're all different. So, um, we don't want to change the ordinance. What we would like to do is ask the commission to hold a public hearing next month on, um, the staff being able to advise the developers when it is appropriate to have more than one entrance and exit. So what I need is a motion to hold public hearing on that.
Well, I'll make the motion for the public hearing, but I've got a question for staff. Charles, in the pre-act meetings, aren't y'all making those recommendations already to the developers? So I'm kind of curious, what, what, what else, what are we adding to this? What's going to change? If, if staff is already making the recommendation to, that it would be in the best interest to, to add another entrance.
Well, I think some of the members of the committee, the commission members, were considering making it a requirement that the commission would require this regardless of the size of the development or the configuration of the, the tract or whatever. And they just felt, let it become policy that it'd be strictly up to the staff to recommend or to, um, to require the developer to either provide the one or the two or whatever number is needed.
Okay.
And then the commission would go along with that.
And I really thought it was more of an authority, giving you more authority to make that decision. Not, not waiting till it gets to us where we say, oh, no, you should have another entrance. Giving staff the authority to make that decision before it comes to us.
My motion stands.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion for a public hearing next month on the access for subdivisions.
Correct.
By Michael Marshawn, seconded by Beverly Barre.
And we had one other item in our, on our agenda that we would like to.
Can I get a vote?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Okay, now we had one other item. And this came before our subcommittee this week. And what we would like to do, um, right now, if you have two streets that intersect, the names change at the intersection. But what we, what was brought to the staff was when we have a curb with two different street names, there is some confusion on where the street name changes. So staff has recommended that we put in a street name break on plats or subdivision plots. And that's another thing that we would like to ask the commission to make a recommend, to have a public hearing on that. And we're, we want to add those to the checklist, right? It's not going to be ordinance. It's going to be added to the checklist.
All right. Any discussion?
Well, why do we need a public hearing to have, add that to the checklist?
Procedure?
Procedure adopted and is processed.
Oh, okay.
Actually, staff said that there was an instance recently where there was a curb with two different street names. And there was, there was a, there was just some, there was a lot of confusion with it and I really have to draw it to explain it to you. But it will alleviate confusion on the street names.
I have a motion. Motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Beverly Barre to have a public hearing next month on.
Street name breaks.
Breaks continuity. Call of the boat. Thank you. Moving on, strategic planning committee report. O'Neill, did they? I don't think they did either. Skip to that. New business? Anybody have any new business? Old business? The Crawl Stafford Estates was deleted. The Leroy Meyer property, tracks X1 through X6.
Good evening. We have, uh, met with staff and believe we have addressed all of the requirement issues and commission and staff identified. We apologize for not having the modifications to the drawings completed and in time for the meeting. We respectfully request that the commission will approve the request subject to making the following changes to the plans. Reduce the private drive in the front lot, on the front of the lots, 50-foot and in the, the private driveway north line of Track X6.
And your name, state your name, please, sir.
Peter Muir.
Thank you. Commissioners have any questions?
I, I just want to say that I, I caused all the ruckus over the right of way. So I met with staff and, and the petitioner to, um, to review this and, um, it was in consensus with Charles, working through this, that the right way to do this is to have that, um, the private driveway in front of Lots X3, X4, and X5 be 50-foot wide rather than the 60-foot that I had mentioned. And that the double extension of 50-foot right of way that would be dedicated to provide access to Track X1 was in fact adequate and would meet code.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll go ahead and, and open it back up for public hearing just to do the revision, see if anybody has any comments. Okay, public hearing is closed. Commissioners have any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion subject to the two modifications being properly depicted on the platte before it's signed.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Michael Marshawn to have the platte revised before signature. Any opposition? Motion passes. Item number 13. Don't jump in there so quick there, Julio. Motion by Julio. Second. Seconded by Steve. Any objection? We'll reconvene in five minutes for the joint session of planning and zoning on the PUD.